Yes, sir. Good evening. I'd like to call the October 27, 2025 Borough Council meeting to order. Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Adequate notice has been provided as required under Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 specifying the time, date, and location of this meeting by posting a copy of the notice at the municipal building on the municipal website and providing a copy of the annual notice scheduled to the official newspapers of the borough. Notice is also on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambraena?
Present.
Councilman Collins?
Here.
Councilman Menko?
Here.
Councilman Posnansky?
Here.
Councilwoman Payne?
Here.
Councilman Potter?
Here.
Mayor Murray?
Present.
Borough Attorney Vignolo?
Present.
Borough Engineer Mike McClellan?
Here.
Borough Engineer Lou Plaskanka?
Present.
Borough Administrator Fred Carr?
Present.
Will everyone please stand for a moment of silence solid by the salute of the flag.
(Inaudible) America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please read ordinance 25-1575 by title, please?
I believe we have open to the public first.
Mr. Mayor, we've got a couple of things.
Presentation.
No comments, questions?
Resolution.
The presentation is postponed.
Yes, the presentation is postponed.
And then open to the public?
Comments, questions, audience. Now's the time for public comment limited to the resolutions listed on the agenda only. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Again, in this is the public portion is limited to the comments only on the resolutions listed on the agenda at this time. There'll be a five-minute time limit set forth by the rules of council. If someone raises their hand, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll close. Oh, go ahead.
How are you?
Thank you. I just have one question. My name is Angelo Campelia. My question was, will the new block party ordinance make it easier for residents to hold neighborhood events?
It will. They're actually, it's gonna, I think they were just having...
So, real quick, you're still only be asking on resolutions, not ordinances, so... But that's all right. But it's a great question that you have, and we're gonna be...
We're gonna be talking about that.
Yeah, in a minute. So I hope that'll answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Eduardo Pendav. Can you please share the borough's actual score on the 2025 best practice survey and how it compares to last year's?
It'll be discussed as a resolution later in the agenda.
So... I don't have the exact number of points that we received last year compared to this year in front of me right now, but I do have access to that when I get back to my DCA thing. So if you take my card, I will send you the actual number. I will tell the council, since you've asked a question, and you, sir, that we have answered sufficient questions to meet the requirement and not lose any money, which is the important part.
Thank you.
But I'll give you the numbers.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Very good question, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 2025-349, is that gonna be dealing with the state appropriated funds, the million dollars for the lead line replacement?
Mr. Orniak, while I know who you are, if you could just state your name.
I apologize. Charles Orniak, 322 South Main Street.
I'm sorry, please again.
Charles Orniak, O-R-Y-N-I-A-K, also known as Trouble. Yeah, 349 deal with the money that's appropriate from the state inserting it into the budget. Is that what it's basically for? Okay, cool. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments, I'll close. Audience comments? Authorizing... Oh, I'm sorry. Now we get through your...
Yes.
Sorry, there we go. Will the clerk please read ordinance 25-1575 by title, please?
Ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 4 General Licensing and Business Regulations of the Revised General Ordances of the Borough of Milltown to include new Section 4-41 residential block parties.
May I have a motion in the second for ordinance 25-1575, please?
I'd like to make a motion. We table this ordinance?
I'd like the second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilman Potter to table ordinance 25-1575. Is there any comments?
So just to let you know, the reason why we're tabling is because we're going to be the chief of police this week. Councilwoman Payne sent us the meeting, so this will be one of the items we're gonna discuss right now.
Yeah, we just need to review some of the language and the proposed ordinance, and, you know, we intend to get it back on the agenda. Hopefully by the next meeting, it's not the one after that. Just needed some tweaking and a little bit more discussion.
I think $50 is too much for a garage, I mean for a block party. I mean, it just seems out of, out of the costs, it's too much for most families to, you know, it rains you're out $50, so we have to put an adjustment in there for a rain day. So I think that should be done, too.
Thanks. We'll take it under advisement. Thank you.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
For tabling, Council President Zambraena?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor, to table.
Thank you. Authorizing payment of municipal obligations. Next on the agenda, we have authorizing payment of municipal obligations. Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-341 by title?
Resolution 2025-341, authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of $2,337,853.57.
You have heard a reading of this resolution. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I had a question on that. On page four, it says, Councilman Zambraena got some money. You know what that's about, Phil?
Yes, sir.
I didn't know you were Phil.
I can answer a question. He's just being reimbursed for all the things that he put out of pocket for the, for Milltown Day with three seats.
Thanks, man. I appreciate it.
Or you want to look at the bill? This is rather substantial right there, all the receipts.
That's a good... Thanks, Phil. No more questions.
I have two questions. I've spoken about this before, but I'm going to speak about it again. It's 25-1599. It's, it's for BAMRA home improvement, $15,300. I've seen fees here for $2,000, $3,000, but $15,300. Mr. Carr, can you, can you explain that?
Yes, sir. We'll get out there.
Well, I'd also like to know, is there a fee limit on this? Because, like I said, I've seen $2,000, $3,000, and I've asked, but $15,000? I mean, that's, that's, that's a lot of money to ask the taxpayers to put up.
So it's not a fee? So it's not a fee?
What is it?
It's for the home improvements done to the home under our rehabilitation program?
Does it cost the taxpayers money?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's why I brought that up.
It's perfectly fine, sir. This is the, these are the home improvements done as part of the Borough of Milltown's COA program, Affordable Housing Program, part of our rehabilitation portion of that. And they have done... So they did electrical work. They installed smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms. They provide, they replaced the shingles on the roof. They replaced the water heater. They pulled down, there's an attic ladder that they replaced as part of the program, and they replaced the rear entry door of this home, which met the guidelines of our rehabilitation requirements in the borough.
So there's, there's no limit to how much it can cost taxpayers for a person's home?
For, if you meet the COA guidelines, yes, sir. Yes, sir. There's a limit. It's established by this borough or by us. We look at all the bills. We can set a limit if the borough council would like in our COA obligation, but you'd have to do that by count, by ordinance.
Well, I hope people understand why I'm asking about this.
No, sir. It's a valid question. $15,000 to rehabilitate somebody's home under COA guidelines. Yes, sir.
Sure. And, and there's no limit either to, to how many times they can have someone come in and do work on their home. Am I correct?
Normally, they only do it once, sir. These are, these, if you consider that this, how much work had to be done in this home, it was probably in much need of the rehabilitation of that low to moderate income home. Yes, sir.
But, but the person owns the home, and they can do this work, have this work done and pay for it themselves, but the council is paying for it.
Right, because we have an obligation to run a program like that.
And I understand that.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, $15,300 is a lot of money to put, to me, to put on the taxpayers in this town. I understand everything about it, but I have to talk about it.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
All right. Second question. Suppley Clooney?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that they're drawing down. Last month, they were, I believe, they were less than $1,000, but now they're, they're $2,000. I know that we have a new employee there. Is she being trained to, to learn the processes that Suppley Clooney is, is right now providing?
So as I mentioned before, Suppley Clooney does our bank reconciliations for the Borough of Mill, of Milltown.
I understand.
This is not, that's, that's, that's the only thing this bill is for. There are no day-to-day. There's no purchase orders. This is all related to auditing and doing bank reconciliations.
I do understand that, but that's why I'm asking, is the new person?
No, sir.
Going, she's, the person who will not be doing this?
That's not what we hired her for. No, sir. This is a specialized job function.
And this is permanent?
Well, unless we find somebody else who wants to audit it, who wants to do bank reconciliations, then yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is this done by a third party, where there's like, as a separate entity of the town for safety and control?
Yes, sir. So Suppley Clooney has been the, has done bank reconciliations, been hired by the borough for a number of years outside of even before, last year or the year before. They are another set of eyes in the, in the borough.
So when, when I first came in last year, Suppley Clooney was here? Because I remember two people being there.
Yes, sir. If you remember last year, there were two people from Suppley Clooney working in my office because the person who did the accounts payable clerk quit on the 14th of February.
So that person was the one that was doing this work?
So we had to bring them in, those two people from Suppley Clooney, to do what that accounts payable clerk was doing until we brought in Ms. Santos, who then left 90 days later, and then we cross-trained Stephanie, who's currently working there, and then the new lady's helping in there now.
So are either of the two people that are there now going to be picking this up?
No, sir.
It is expressly to be done as a third party for the safety of the...
This is not, this is not, this is not in their skill set, what they, what I would like them to do.
Okay, thank you.
Jeanette used to do the bank recs?
No, Suppley Clooney did.
Suppley Clooney did. Okay, thanks, man.
Mr. Carr, I have two quick questions. The carry actually sparked. For the COA rehab thing, they take out permits through the construction department, correct?
Yes, sir. It all goes through construction. They have to. They have to. They follow all rules. Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you. And how many credits do we get for that residence being, you know, COA requirement thing? Do we get any credits for that?
We have a certain number of rehab obligations, so this is, until we reach that limit, this is part of that obligation. What the numbers are, I don't know off the top of my head. I will admit, I don't have a, you know...
I think when John...
I memorized our rehab obligation.
I think that in the spring, when we get a planner, we could ask him that specific question, but probably like one rehab credit.
Okay.
Beautiful. Thank you.
I had a good question about that COA rehab project. Is there anything to prevent that person from getting the house fixed up and then putting it up for sale?
Typically, there's a lien on the property.
Oh, there is a lien on property? Okay.
So there's a rehab mortgage that they take out.
We just, we just released one about three months ago from 30 years ago.
So if, if they stay in the house for a certain period of time, the, the lien is, is released. But if they don't, then it's probably a sliding scale under which they have to repay.
Okay. So the taxpayers have a chance to get their money back, right?
Right. So it stops what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Someone would, you know...
Put a quick sale up.
Yeah. Have, have the work done and then resell the property. And these are designed for people who are in their homes, who need this work done, and likely are gonna stay in their home. I mean, most of the people who are income qualified are, are, you know, house whippers.
Right. Okay, thanks.
And I believe I've mentioned before, Councilman, that the borough can avoid these fees, which come out of the current fund, by imposing a COA fee at the borough level for construction in the borough that's allowed by the state. It goes into a separate COA trust fund, and only that can be used to the COA obligation. We don't have that, so therefore, we're obligated to buy, to use the current fund to pay for these mandated requirements.
I see. Thanks.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second. I have a motion made by Council President Zambraena, seconded by Councilman Potter. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambraena?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. Authorizing payment of municipal obligations. Next on the agenda, we have authorizing payment of municipal obligations. Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-341 by title?
Resolution 2025-341, authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of $2,337,853.57.
You have heard a reading of this resolution. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I had a question on that. On page four, it says, Councilman Zambraena got some money. You know what that's about, Phil?
Yes, sir.
I didn't know you were Phil.
I can answer a question. He's just being reimbursed for all the things that he put out of pocket for the, for Milltown Day with three seats.
Thanks, man. I appreciate it.
Or you want to look at the bill? This is rather substantial right there, all the receipts.
That's a good... Thanks, Phil. No more questions.
I have two questions. I've spoken about this before, but I'm going to speak about it again. It's 25-1599. It's, it's for BAMRA home improvement, $15,300. I've seen fees here for $2,000, $3,000, but $15,300. Mr. Carr, can you, can you explain that?
Yes, sir. And we'll get out there.
Well, I'd also like to know, is there a fee limit on this? Because, like I said, I've seen $2,000, $3,000, and I've asked, but $15,000? I mean, that's, that's, that's a lot of money to ask the taxpayers to put up.
So it's not a fee? So it's not a fee?
What is it?
It's for the home improvements done to the home under our rehabilitation program?
Does it cost the taxpayers money?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's why I brought that up.
It's perfectly fine, sir. This is the, these are the home improvements done as part of the Borough of Milltown's COA program, Affordable Housing Program, part of our rehabilitation portion of that. And they have done... So they did electrical work. They installed smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms. They provide, they replaced the shingles on the roof. They replaced the water heater. They pulled down, there's an attic ladder that they replaced as part of the program, and they replaced the rear entry door of this home, which met the guidelines of our rehabilitation requirements in the borough.
So there's, there's no limit to how much it can cost taxpayers for a person's home?
For, if you meet the COA guidelines, yes, sir. Yes, sir. There's a limit. It's established by this borough or by us. We look at all the bills. We can set a limit if the borough council would like in our COA obligation, but you'd have to do that by account, by ordinance.
Well, I hope people understand why I'm asking about this.
No, sir. It's a valid question. $15,000 to rehabilitate somebody's home under COA guidelines. Yes, sir.
Sure. And, and there's no limit either to, to how many times they can have someone come in and do work on their home. Am I correct?
Normally, they only do it once, sir. These are, these, if you, if you consider that this, how much work had to be done in this home, it was probably in much need of the, of the rehabilitation of that low to moderate income home. Yes, sir.
But, but the person owns the home, and they can do this work, have this work done and pay for it themselves, but the council is paying for it.
Right, because we have an obligation to run a program like that.
And I understand that.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, $15,300 is a lot of money to put, to me, to put on the taxpayers in this town. I understand everything about it, but I have to talk about it.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
All right. My second question. Suppley Clooney?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that they're drawing down. Last month, they were, I believe, they were less than $1,000, but now they're, they're $2,000. I know that we have a new employee there. Is she being trained to, to learn the processes that Suppley Clooney is, is right now providing?
So as I mentioned before, Suppley Clooney does our bank reconciliations for the Borough of Mill, of Milltown.
I understand.
This is not, that's, that's, that's the only thing this bill is for. There are no day-to-day. There's no purchase orders. This is all related to auditing and doing bank reconciliations.
I do understand that, but that's why I'm asking, is the new person?
No, sir.
Going, she's, the person who will not be doing this?
That's not what we hired her for. No, sir. This is a specialized job function.
And this is permanent?
Well, unless we find somebody else who wants to audit it, who wants to do bank reconciliations, then yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is this done by a third party, where there's like, as a separate entity of the town for safety and control?
Yes, sir. So Suppley Clooney has been the, has done bank reconciliations, been hired by the borough for a number of years outside of even before, last year or the year before. They are another set of eyes in the, in the borough.
So when, when I first came in last year, Suppley Clooney was here? Because I remember two people being there.
Yes, sir. If you remember last year, there were two people from Suppley Clooney working in my office because the person who did the accounts payable clerk quit on the 14th of February.
So that person was the one that was doing this work?
So we had to bring them in, those two people from Suppley Clooney, to do what that accounts payable clerk was doing until we brought in Ms. Santos, who then left 90 days later, and then we cross-trained Stephanie, who's currently working there, and then the new lady's helping in there now.
So are either of the two people that are there now going to be picking this up?
No, sir.
It is expressly to be done as a third party for the safety of the...
This is not, this is not, this is not in their skill set, what they, what I would like them to do.
Okay, thank you.
Jeanette used to do the bank recs?
No, Suppley Clooney did.
Suppley Clooney did. Okay, thanks, man.
Mr. Carr, I have two quick questions. The carry actually sparked. For the COA rehab thing, they take out permits through the construction department, correct?
Yes, sir. It all goes through construction. They have to. They have to. They follow all rules. Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you. And how many credits do we get for that residence being, you know, COA requirement thing? Do we get any credits for that?
We have a certain number of rehab obligations, so this is, until we reach that limit, this is part of that obligation. What the numbers are, I don't know off the top of my head. I will admit, I don't have a, you know...
I think when John...
I memorized our rehab obligation.
I think that in the spring, when we get a planner, we could ask him that specific question, but probably like one rehab credit.
Okay. Beautiful. Thank you.
I had a good question about that COA rehab project. Is there anything to prevent that person from getting the house fixed up and then putting it up for sale?
Typically, there's a lien on the property.
Oh, there is a lien on property? Okay.
So there's a rehab mortgage that they take out.
We just, we just released one about three months ago from 30 years ago.
So if, if they stay in the house for a certain period of time, the, the lien is, is released. But if they don't, then it's probably a sliding scale under which they have to repay.
Okay. So the taxpayers have a chance to get their money back, right?
Right. So it stops what you're talking about.
Yeah.
If someone would, you know...
Put a quick sale up.
Yeah. Have, have the work done and then resell the property. And these are designed for people who are in their homes, who need this work done, and likely are gonna stay in their home. I mean, most of the people who are income qualified are, are, you know, house whippers.
Right. Okay, thanks.
And I believe I've mentioned before, Councilman, that the borough can avoid these fees, which come out of the current fund, by imposing a COA fee at the borough level for construction in the borough that's allowed by the state. It goes into a separate COA trust fund, and only that can be used to the COA obligation. We don't have that, so therefore, we're obligated to buy, to use the current fund to pay for these mandated requirements.
I see. Thanks.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Council President Zambraena. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambraena?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any reports from any elected officials? You know, normally it's the fourth, second meeting. Seeing none?
I have some from the council.
Reports from borough professionals? Attorney Peter Viñola?
Just, just one thing. You're honored.
Don't.
You're honored. Goodness. You are honorable. You're the honorable George Murray. The executive session that's on for this evening will not be necessary, so we can pull that resolution when the time comes.
Yay.
I understand.
Thought I'd make you doubt.
Her attorney, CME? Sorry.
There you go. It's catchy.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some quick numbers on the water meter project. To date, two thousand three hundred and sixty-eight meters have been installed. That's twenty since the last council meeting. We're at about ninety point seven percent. We still have two hundred and three that are not scheduled.
So Lou, I do have a quick question, since I have still been getting calls. Has that phone line issue been resolved, where residents can't actually get through to schedule their replacement of their meters?
Yeah, we actually tried scanning the code on the notice ourselves, and it works, so.
Okay.
Now, the contractor's got limited dates, because there's not a lot of people signing up, but they can still get in and.
Are they able to call on the phone?
Yes.
Okay, because I know there was issues with them calling on the phone.
Yep.
Thank you. How long do we still have the contract with the installer? How long do we still have the contract with the installer?
There's really no limit to the contract, but obviously, they want to get a certain number scheduled, so they can come out and get a full day's work.
Yeah, Councilman, I expressed last week or the week before that, you know, they were hired to install the meters, not the percentage of the meters, and that we fully expect them to be available. Now, they have reduced their timing in town from five days to two days or one day, and if it's been in Milltown Monday, and somebody calls, they should be able to reach an operator who says, sorry, there's nothing available next Monday or two Mondays from now, but how about Monday at such and such and such a time, and they should be good to go. And then once they've signed up, they get off the list and everything and go.
Thank you. Is it true that the most, some, there's a large portion of commercial accounts that aren't being?
No, sir, they're residential.
They're all residential?
Not all, but there are some residential, there are some commercial, like Arissa, but, you know, most of these, like eighty percent, eighty-five percent are residents who have not responded.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there any member of council, has any old business to bring before council? What, did you have something?
I just wanted to remind everybody about election matters that are coming up. Early voting began this last Saturday, and it will continue through November second. Early voting centers are open from ten AM to eight PM every day except Sundays, which is six PM. Sample ballots mailed, starting October twenty-second, which is the statutory deadline. And the deadline for the county clerk's office to receive a vote-by-mail application by mail is tomorrow, the twenty-eighth. Otherwise, you can go in person up until three o'clock the day before Election Day. The drop box out here at the edge of the parking lot will remain open until eight PM on November fourth. Send in-person on Election Day, November fourth, polls will be open from six AM to eight PM.
Fred, do you have anything?
No, sir, I'm good. Thank you.
Does any member of council have any old business to bring before council? Seeing none, not close old business. Does any member of council have any new business to bring before council? Seeing none, not close new business. Open to the public. Public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public's input, bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. Any council will respect the public's time by refraining from any comments until the speaker has finished. Should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question-and-answer session. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Just a reminder, under the rules of council, individuals wishing to speak during the public input part of the meeting should be limited to five minutes, and may, after other speakers have finished, be allowed to speak for a second five-minute period. If someone raises their hand, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Debbie Miller, ninety-two Ford Avenue. I guess I'm not supposed to ask this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Is there any updates on Ford Avenue that can be released to us?
At this point, it's still in litigation, so I would rather not comment on it.
Okay. Is there a plan to move forward with the firehouse on Main Street?
I would think so. We're in the process of putting together appraisals, so that we can share them with the rest of the council before the end of the year, so we can have an idea of value, property value. We did this about, almost three years ago, probably stagnant at this time, so once we get an appraisal, we get an idea of what's going on, we have a QPA on board, we'll start moving forward with the plan.
So I guess it looks like it's going to be sold to whoever?
Hmm, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that.
What is, so you just want to find out the value of it?
So far, for now, for now. Whether it's going to be sold, whether it's going to be rented, that's still up in the air.
Okay, thank you.
Whatever's in the best interest of the residents of the town.
So last month, they, or last meeting, they passed a resolution for the professionals, and I was just wondering if there's ever been a thought of a professional grant writer?
That's a good idea.
I'm sorry, what?
A professional grant writer?
Oh.
With the improvements that could be done for the town?
It's a good idea.
We've thought about that in the past, but nobody's ever taken any action on it.
Okay. Then on a positive note, the Milltown Public Library had a great turnout for our third annual Fall Harvest Festival. I want to thank the Police Department, the Fire Department, Rescue Squad, DPW, as well as our sponsors Bronson and Crabiel, and of course, the community. Thank you.
Lee Weisenberger, ninety-nine JFK Drive. Tonight, I'm hoping to get a little clarification on some items and present some other stuff. One of the first ones I'll start with, resident in the community gave me a photo going back in time, and this is Mayor David Crabiel, and this is July second, nineteen sixty-nine. This is the dredging of Mill Pond. That's when it took place.
Could I see, could we see that later?
I can, you can get to see it later.
Oh, okay.
I have a lot of copies, this just came out recently now. Upon looking at, there's many articles leading up to this. This went on for quite a while. Once again, council meetings, so forth, what to do. I give Mr. Crabiel credit at that time for reading these articles, because I think he had the same problem we have today. He finally said, "To heck with it," and he did it. He got donations locally, and like I said, they dredged it. They applied to do below the dam. That took a while. I've been in contact with the DEP, I can find, they found no permits for this. That's not unusual, there were many different departments, they did a deep search, couldn't find it, but it was dredged. So that was later on, seventy-seven about. But out of this particular photo, because of all these articles, I hit a treasure trove on a lot of stuff. Mr. Crabiel, in part of this, mentioned something that happened in the thirties. The WPA. Nineteen thirty-seven, depression year, New Brunswick Water was granted eighty-seven thousand dollars from Weston Mill at Route eighteen to Davidson Mill. Two hundred and forty-seven men cleaned out that whole stretch by hand, working out of boats and little, just little barges, little floats. In the article that's in here, they list what they took out, the number of stumps, trees, debris, ton of stuff. There's two photos, when this started and after. The before photo doesn't come out. This was taken from the railroad trestle, the big trestle looking back to town. It's fuzzy, it's out of the paper, but if you go to nineteen forty in historical aerials, it's very clear. Even though that's a couple of years later, you'll see how clean that pond and that stretch is. It's incredible. The big part, and you'll see this photo, and I'll just flash it now, that was all swamp from the big trestle looking back to town. One of the standout features in this photo, Joyce Kilmer School. It's the only thing that could be there. A lot of people don't realize the distance from that trestle to the little trestle is not that far in a straight line. Like I said, they cleaned this whole thing out, it's pretty incredible. The other thing to this, in that article, it goes back and forth, but Army Corps was involved in this. And they went to state senators and stuff, too, and I would suggest now, I would just cut out the DEP. I would go straight to the Army Corps, send them some information, what's got to be done here. I would get together with the same towns that were here. This was done basically because of New Brunswick Water, because of the contamination, and they're saying by the bacteria from the stumps and decaying material and everything else, and that's why this was done. So I don't know what's changed, if they got better filtration or whatever here, but this thing, the Mill Pond weed problem goes back into the thirties, probably even before. There's many articles on it. Once again, once you do it, there has to be a program that every so many years, you go in and clean. The other thing that came out of this that I did not know, and this is what they're saying, Lawrence Brook is the only freshwater stream in Middlesex County. That's why it was so valuable back then, because it was supplying water to all the supplying towns, or surrounding towns. That hasn't changed much, because the population has gone up dramatically, and once it's in, that's the most valuable piece of water source we got. And yet, when grant money is put out for de-snagging and arrested and stuff, the people that got that money, who cares? That's for recreation ponds and so forth. You know, water, water is water, it is valuable. So like I said, I would go directly to Army Corps, or I don't know which senator to start bothering, somebody, because that's what they did, and see what can happen there, you know? Because like you said, knocking on doors in the county and stuff, nah, nah. You've got to push it right to the top and see what we can do with it. Okay? That's part one. Part two, once again, this opened up a whole bunch of stuff, and going through a lot of stuff again, little data here for the Historical Society. That plaque that's on the railroad bridge, nineteen oh seven, that's the year that bridge was built. It was installed in nineteen oh eight. So this is one twenty-seven nineteen oh eight, out of the Central New Jersey Home News Archives. The new iron trestle, which is to be erected over the Brook for the railroad, has arrived, and work will be resumed, which the Michelin Tire Company is building, as soon as the results of the recent blizzard have been overcome. And I'm still trying to find the exact date it was put in. It's probably in a different paper, it's going to take time to dig it up, but just another piece. Once again, Michelin owned it, we pass it through. Once again, we go to Mill Pond. Another interesting article. Small, but it's out of a big article. This is April thirteenth, nineteen fifty-six. There's problems with the pond, there's problems with the pond going back a long time, just because oil sheens show up, different stuff shows up from the factory. The same people get involved with that all the time. Border Health, State Border Health, New Brunswick Water, Milltown. People representing Milltown in all these articles is the attorney for the borough. In this particular case, it's a small, I'll read it. Reinhardt said that it's practically impossible to open the gates at the dam without bulkheads, and that Dickerson has pointed out there were legal aspects to the matter. The Also Corporation owns the dam and the pond at the building. The pipes are under the water. You people don't know, Mr. Dickerson. I know. Really strange. Stanley Dickerson was an attorney out of South River, represented many towns, represented my family, a lot of my relatives. I have utmost respect for Mr. Dickerson. He is mentioned in many articles, same problem, because of the pollution with that. Once again, just verifying facts on the pond, because there's many articles about this going on for years. And I'm going to get back to the pond again tonight, because I need a little clarification from Mr. Granola. A few meetings back, when I mentioned the pond, he made a, he gave an answer, a small comment, that we don't know how that happened, which is referring to the tax assessor's office and how this property switched to the borough of Milltown. Mr. Granola may not answer that, I would like to know who we is, who's discussing this. If he doesn't answer the council, have you been discussing any of this with Mr. Granola? The pond, ownership, anybody? I think the taxpayers deserve an answer. Nothing?
I'm not aware of anybody having a conversation about it, for the record. I was merely indicating that, to the best of my knowledge, from the information I've heard, I don't know that anybody has an indication of how it became designated as owned by the borough on the tax rolls. And frankly, I think you know that, because I think you've spoken with the assessor numerous times regarding that issue.
That's the point. We're going on probably six years, from the previous council to this council. I don't know if you people realize how serious this is. And we're all on a hook here right now. We're not talking petty cash here, change, pocket change, we're talking millions of dollars here. Because, once again, cleaning that pond, fixing things, millions of dollars. We ain't got it. Whoever did this, this ownership gig, whether it was to benefit us, harm us, I don't know. I could take some guesses, but I don't know. This can't continue, I keep saying it. You can fix this, without a lot of hassle, right now. You take what we got, the title searches, so forth, take it to a judge. We made a mistake, somebody made a mistake, we want to correct it. Give them the deed, give them the title searches. If you got to contact Mr. Berger, I don't think he's going to check, although he might get a little ticked off, but you got to do it. Every day this goes by, it's going to get worse. And whatever happens with Ford Avenue, it's going to come up again, it has to. Because that property is all one piece, it has not been supplemented yet, and that's what I don't understand with this whole mess. Along that line, the council passed an ordinance going back, this is two thousand thirteen. I can go to the last page. Adopted on first reading, September ninth, two thousand thirteen. Adopted on second reading, October fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. Approved by the mayor, October sixteenth, two thousand thirteen. This is within days of when Mr. Boray got the approval to go ahead with Ford Avenue. There's two things in this particular ordinance. Steep slopes, and then a riparian buffer zone. Steep slopes, I understand. Riparian buffer zone has got me really concerned. I don't know if this was pushed down- I don't know if this was pushed down from the state. It's very hard to figure what's going on here. I don't know who was involved with this. That's another question I have. Who writes the ordinances? Who puts them together?
Depends on what the ordinance is.
As I said, but it's either got to come out of the planning board or the zoning board?
Uh, no.
No? It can't come out of here, then?
The council is, prepares an ordinance. If it's a ordinance that is a zoning ordinance, it's subject to review by the planning board for consistency with the master plan.
But everybody could contribute to it. Engineering, planning board, so forth.
The ordinances you're talking about, the steep slope and riparian buffer ordinance, were NJDEP ordinances that were required from the state level for all municipalities to adopt.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. That's, I got that part.
That was the authority at the time, so I can answer that question.
Right, I tried to understand that. And so, they can just come in and take that property that's owned by Mr. Berger, and just, it's riparian buffer zone now. It's frozen.
They did it through wetlands too. Wetlands regulations took a lot of property that people owned and said, you can't use it anymore.
And no compensation, no nothing.
That's between the state and Mr. Berger.
It's us too. Because we've got the rescue squad in Mill Pond Park. And there's restrictions on those zones.
There are.
That's right. So I want everybody to find out, what's the restrictions?
There are any ordinance.
Well, it's tough, I understand your point, but like I said, when the rescue squad building was given to us by Mr. Alsaw, he has egress and ingress rights to the pond in perpetuity, and whoever passes that on to. So are they gone now?
Lee, if you could just finish up, please?
Anybody else want to speak?
I'll take us.
Lee, excuse me, Lee, if you can, please, in the future, sharpen your focus. You know, you get five minutes, and I appreciate what you're talking about, but you've been up here for about 15 minutes.
That's fine, I appreciate it.
Have you thought of trying to get on the Ford Avenue Commission? Because you know as much probably as the people there, and you're probably more beneficial being there than here. You know what you get when you come here.
I've been speaking to everybody for years.
I understand, but you could try to get on the Ford Avenue Commission, you could be a help to them.
I'm trying to help everybody, but I'm not getting anywhere.
But if you join the commission, you could be a bigger help. Do you maybe think that?
If I had the time to do that, like I said, my time too, I'm all over the place. I'm digging into so much stuff.
Our time is very similar here.
I get it. That's why I'm trying to help now. You know, this is a back and forth, we help each other. I'm trying to explain what happened too. I don't know who knew about this stuff. I just found out.
But do you think anyone up here knows? Because they don't.
I disagree with that.
Really?
Yes. Yes. That's another thing I have to do now. I've got to go back and find the names of the people that were on planning boards and committees and so forth, and see who was there.
Okay.
And like I said, the people that were there in 2013, when this ordinance was passed, that's why, where did it come from? That's what I'm saying. Who contributed to it? If I can't get that here, I don't think I'm going to get it out of those committees either, or the boards.
But you can bring more information when you come next time.
I appreciate what you're saying. So along that line, Ford Avenue redevelopment.
Lee, please, there may be other people that want to...
I said, anybody want to speak?
You've been up here 20 minutes.
Okay, fine, okay. I didn't hear that.
But I have to say...
I apologize.
I was going to say something, Lee.
20 minutes.
Dorian Kerber, 24 Reva Avenue. Thank you for bringing that up, because as of next year, we are to take care of the watershed planning. Start talking about it, getting the public input, doing outreach for all our waterways in the town. It's required by January 2027 to have a plan done for our brooks, the pond, and Lawrence Brook watershed. This is to be done. This is a state law. This has been a state law for quite some time. And I handed out, when I was on council, the timeframe, and it's now, is the time for the watershed plan. So starting in 2026, you have to find out who owns what. It's required to do the brook. North Brook is causing issues. We don't have it cleared off. It's chopping people's backyards down. That's our responsibility too. It is Ford Avenue redevelopment, has to be involved. Engineer has to be involved. Your professionals in town need to be involved, because it's a joint effort, and it's a very community-oriented effort by the church. They, you know, any of the churches, everything. It's got to be a full community outreach. It's not going to be just a one or two or three meetings, and then we have a rehabilitation plan done. It's several meetings. And you need to do the full outreach. You know, involve your seniors. If they can't make it at night, then do something during the day. It's got to be, mine's got to be put together, and this has to be done. Now, you can hire the, for less rates, the Princeton Hydro, you can hire Rutgers Water Resource Program. They're going to be less costly than you picking out someone from some political party, saying, oh, he's my paler buddy, and he can do it. No. The whole premise of the ordinance that was done by the state is for you to do outreach with other groups, your state agencies, the county also probably will need to be involved. It's a joint effort on everyone's part, including all the council, the mayor, professionals, and your staff. That's the whole idea. You want to get input. We want to do this together. That's why everyone's thriving in Jersey City, Somerville, Hoboken, everywhere else but central New Jersey. Highland Park is doing very well. Metatchen is doing well. Woodbridge, they give money every year to the Water Resources Program. So they're doing all those towns, what is it, Port Reading, Carteret, that's all part of Woodbridge, you know, as well as Fords, Island, all them. They're all part of Woodbridge, those towns. And they're implementing all these stormwater plans. It's your MS4 Stormwater Coordinator, Ralph Jazanowski, he's been going through all these trainings, long before today. He's been going through since 2014. That's all they've been doing with the DPW Stormwater Coordinators, all about this program. And this is the last portion. You've had all these other portions. And what's coming up is, there's 1,800 people throughout this whole nation, stormwater fee. It is a one-time yearly fee for every church, every business, every resident to pay the fee. Now, I was sitting in at the, was it Sustainable Jersey? And Maplewood did an analysis, they came up with a figure of $150. They did the pilot program, so they got a lot of funding for it. And they kindly, it kind of went down to $120 was the average fee. But it's all based upon your impervious cover. So the more parking lots you have, yes, you're going to pay more. The more that you do now, and start planting, or doing bio swells, or rain gardens, or even a rain barrel, and the more that we do in town with the homeowners, that's what's important, that they get involved and do their part as well. It will lessen their fee. I mean, some will be $20, some will be $150, whatever it may be. But getting these other outside agencies in will help us to determine a whole, full plan with that, when the time comes. Milltown's usually the last to do the stormwater fee, or most anything else. However, Maplewood's done, New Brunswick did it years ago, last year. They have a fee. Everyone pays it. You don't get out of it. And they're more impervious than we are. So luckily, we have more, you know, land and stuff compared to some other towns. But Maplewood passed it, there's several others in the state that are finally passing it. They've been talking about it for five years and keeping hush up on it. Now everyone's getting it done. So that's something you're going to have to look at, starting out next year, and by '27, you're going to know that many more towns in this state are passing it. And guess what? We're way behind comparative Philadelphia. They've had it for years. Everyone has had it for years. Because where's the water going to go? It's eventually going to be in everyone's basements again, like that time where Ida, and the two weeks prior to Ida. It's challenging, but the more we do upstream, the less people suffer downstream. And we need to start doing this. I plan on, just so you know, maintaining the rain gardens in Mill Pond. I'm going to take care of that this year, with the help from Rutgers. And since I am a GI champion, I get a lot of benefits, at no cost. So I hope you take me up on that opportunity. If it's a green infrastructure champion program plan, resiliency plan, I can do it. I have the ability to do it. But you know, if you want to hire people, that's fine. And make it more costly, that's your decision, it's not my decision. But I can do this. I'm actually going to be doing more training, more installations of rain gardens physically. We did one in Long Branch, a couple of weeks ago. We do the planning, we do the conversation with the homeowner. They pay what they're going to pay, but we get the free labor. And there is a Middlesex County nonprofit that wants to do more of these in Middlesex County at the homeowner's level, and I'm part of the group, as well as Eric from the Rutgers Water Resources Program. So we're really pushing hard this winter to advertise it, and we're getting good vibes, we're getting people signing up that they really want. And it's not big. A 60 square foot is not a big rain garden, but it's going to do wonders for their yard. The water won't be standing. You won't have, you know, you have somewhere to put your stormwater on rainstorms and stuff. So that's what's important, and I'm glad to be a part of this, because I know this is going to grow in this county, and in the areas nearby. So if you need anything, just let me know. I'll be happy to discuss it further. I'm putting presentations together, so that's better understanding, and we'll be doing that in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Charles Renac, 322 South Main Street. First, I want to thank Lee for everything that he does. I get a kick out of it, and I love how much research you do into all the history that you've discovered, that even I, I love learning about it. It's awesome. Also, I want to throw a shout out to Rachel Freed for the very successful Millouine that we've had this weekend. It sounds like everybody had an awesome time, and it was very enjoyable for everybody. Unfortunately, I wasn't here, I was at work, but from everything I've seen, everybody loved it. Another question, comment, whatever. Debbie was talking about the firehouse. I want to clear something up, that Mr. Lagati had brought up a few weeks ago, a couple of months ago, whenever it was, when he said that the only reason he voted for something was because it was going to be sold. That is not the fact. The fact is that the mayor at the time, Steber, Mayor Steber, he had said, he had mentioned it as one of the options, selling it. The other option was keeping it, or restoring it, using it for several other things. Also, in 2019, I had brought a petition forward that was signed by 1,588 people about saving it and keeping it in borough hands. I hope that we can still do that, and I honestly hope that, even after the appraisal, that we can keep it in borough hands and at least lease it out, so it will definitely, hopefully will be preserved, because we know that once we sell something, we're not going to get it back. And there's no guarantee that it's going to remain standing. One other thing, well, another thing I want to mention was, with the, I'm sorry. Do we have street repaving scheduled for this coming year? Is it in the budget for this year, do we know?
Yes, it is.
It is? Okay. All right. Is it just going to be like all the other ones that we've seen, where everything, any trees are clear cut and not replanted? Because it doesn't seem like trees are being replanted, and that's very disheartening, because it adds value to a house, it helps keep a house cooler, and it's more pleasant to walk under trees than it is to walk down a barren street. Just an observation of mine, and something I hope we can do when we redo the streets from now on. And that's all I had.
Five minutes is time, Lee.
I'll go to the riparian rights quick. I had family members have riparian rights. They're like gold. You'd never give them up. Like I said, that's why it's going to be an issue in this Ford Avenue mess with the pond. It seems like the whole mess with Ford Avenue is the state. It seems like every rule, the housing, everything pertains to Ford Avenue. And now there's buffer zone stuff too, same thing. Like I said, it's bad. I'll move along quickly. Mr. Pozanski, I have a lot of respect for you. And along what you were saying, I tried in the Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency, talking with Mr. Cahill. I wanted the name from somebody on the county who signed that agreement that we have with them. 20-plus years with the county, that agreement has changed, it's done everything, I can't get a name. You think that's right? That's what I'm saying. Something's wrong here. Something's terribly wrong. And like I said, I'm looking at so much stuff, and it gets worse and worse. And I'm just a layman, you know? I'm the little guy. And trying to interpret this stuff, that's what I said, when I saw this riparian thing, where you just, the state comes in, and boom, and he loses all the rights to the pond and stuff, makes no sense. And then we get it? Nah. Something's wrong. That's what I'm saying. I appreciate the time tonight.
I could tell you this, Lee, and I know this from experience back through the family, that when they built Farrington Lake, the city of New Brunswick owns 10 feet around most of the lake.
Yeah, they own the land under the water, too.
They own the land under the water, but they own the land 10 feet around, which most people don't know. Now, whether that carries down, I don't know.
The WPA article that I have, that pertains to the whole stretch except Milltown. Why? Because the rubber companies owned it first, it went to Michelin, it went to Berger. It's as simple as that.
But the water itself is New Brunswick's.
Brunswick controls the water.
Right.
There has to be so much water going over those dams all the time. That's DEP rules. So I don't care about that.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether the...
I'm not worried about that.
The rights carry to New Brunswick now, because it's part of the Farrington Lake.
Only the water. It's just the water.
Oh, the water.
Flowing of the water, except, like I said, they own below Milltown. Milltown's the only stretch where the companies that were here owned it.
I see.
It's that simple. It's in a ton of articles, it's in the deeds.
Right.
This is what I don't understand either.
Well, because the pond was there before the lake. Pond was probably there...
Like I said, you've got to straighten this out.
1940s.
You have the material to do it, and do it before it turns into a mega-dollar, you know, nightmare. So somebody do something. Appreciate the time.
Lee, I'd like to say, I respect you, and I appreciate what you do, and I understand your frustration. I think in regards to Ford Avenue, there's nothing but frustration. And I appreciate your due diligence when you still can't find things. And I appreciate what you do, because you take a lot of time doing it, I understand.
I respect you too. Like I said, looking back, when that title search came out in 97, that first title search, this town, like I said, I can go 50/50, but this town created the problem. They created the problem with Mr. Berger, if you read the articles back then, because they pushed him, and he didn't like it. And I don't blame them. And we're feeling the effects of that now. That's why this thing's gone on for a zillion years. That's my opinion. So like I said, so somebody prove me different, prove me wrong, go ahead. Otherwise, something else that's come out of all this archive stuff, you know what's referenced to Milltown many times? Record keeping. It was abysmal. Now you know where we're at.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Rosa Tavarris, 100 Reva Avenue. I wasn't going to ask yet, but I'll go ahead and ask. Is there a plan for how to handle the households that are not doing their part in getting their water meter replaced? And then...
You mean someone who hasn't made an appointment yet?
Right.
Yes?
Okay. Because I'm directly involved, I'm now getting certified... Because I'm directly involved, I'm now getting certified letters from the construction company about the fact that I have a lead line. So, how is this being, is this going to be done piecemeal?
As we spoke last week, I'm sorry, I'll interrupt you, but we are going to be levying some charges that will be monthly as really an attempt to motivate those people. There is, you know, the idea of terminating their services, or shutting off their water is not an option based upon some of the time constraints in the winter. But that's really just the best we can do. But it's going to be probably 250, and it's going to be monthly. And at some point, I assume that that will motivate people to do it.
And so, for the people that do have lead lines, are they going to be individually addressed? Or is the township going to do like one big rehabilitation of the problem?
So, I think that question should be directed to Mr. Carr.
Who's not here. This is not the BA you're looking for. Let me, so, let me address your letter from the construction department. We are mandated-
It's not the first, by the way. But okay. It's not the first.
No, no. Because we're required in the DE, so, DEP has mandated to the borough as part of the lead conversation, I just use the lead conversation, that homeowners who have lead pipes are informed by the borough every year, hey, you got a lead pipe. You know that. I know that. We all know that. But DEP says you got to send them a letter every year. In fact, right now, as part of our analysis program, so, let's talk about where we are right now. As the engineers mentioned, we're about just 203 homes who have not yet been evaluated. Part of that conversation of our water meter replacement project is to get a hard number because DEP requires us to say how many lines are lead lined. And then, they have mandated that it's the borough's responsibility to replace those lines. Now, the borough can pass an ordinance saying it's not our problem, it's yours, and then where our hands are clean. What we have done, or the borough has done, is we have a million dollars, as I've talked about before, that we talked about tonight. So, tonight's resolution amending the budget, we could not amend our budget until we had asked for the money. It's very strange. This is Jersey, though, right? Let me wax philosophical. This is Jersey. We got the million dollars. It's in the budget. Jersey then requires us to ask for the money, which we already got. They have to approve the grant for the money we asked for. The mayor has to write a letter. I write a letter, fill out a form. Then they go, hey, you get the money, which you already got, and now you can-
Do you have it yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay? But we have, we had it in the budget. But we have to go through all this legislative hoopla to fill out a bunch of paperwork. And now, next year sometime, when we have a clean letter and a clean number, the council and engineer can sit down and say, look, we have 70 people in the borough. We now, it's going to cost us, let's say, two million dollars to fix this. We'll ask for more money, of course. Okay? We can use our money, and then we're going to replace everybody's line. Because we're not just required by the law to replace the water line, the lead line in your house, but we have to take it all the way out to the street. And we have to prove to DEP that that connection to the main in the middle of the street, in spite of the fact that we may have just paved that road. Ah, yeah. Isn't that exciting? So, we get to dig up the brand-new road, to take a picture of it, so we can say, yes, there's no lead at that connection to the water main in accordance with the requirement. So, two million dollars is probably a good start to get to that point. We have till 2031, right, Mike?
Twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty-one. So, we, so, in this regard, in Milltown's regard, compared to the repairing portion and the water gardens, and whether or not we do anything with the dam, we're way ahead of the power curve because of the water meter replacement project that we started last year using grant money from the state.
So, does the borough know if there's larger water lines, like in the street, that still need to be repaired? Or is it just the individual lines to individual-
So, these are, the lead pipes that we're talking about are service lines.
Okay.
Okay? The ones in the street are ductile iron, for the most part.
Those are iron already? So, that's already in place?
Those are iron, yeah.
Okay.
So, the problem is, from day one, has always been lead contamination or lead lines, either the fittings or the joints or portions of them. Some of their older cities we are now on, Irvington, Newark, Flint, Michigan, the line from the street all the way into the house with a lead pipe.
And so, it remains to be seen what plan the borough will take in terms of how that'll be addressed?
Yes. The specifics of it, yes.
Right.
But a good, clean number, as the councilman talked about, is really important.
Right. So, the letters are basically informational purposes?
Yes. In case you don't know that you have lead.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anytime.
Debbie Miller, 92 Ford Avenue. I have a follow-up to that. When it first started, I thought there was also galvanized. Is that included in?
So, in the words of DEP, okay, if you have a galvanized steel line, which lead particles in the water can adhere to, use the word can, can, okay, they classify the same as lead. They didn't go to the same science class that Mike and Lou and I did. Were we thinking it's galvanized? Give me a break, but DEP said if it's galvanized, it's just like lead.
So, the houses that are considered lead, it can also mean that they have galvanized?
No, we know exactly whether it's galvanized or lead. But for DEP's replacement project, be it galvanized and/or lead, they treat them the same. But our analysis will tell you exactly what kind of service line the house has as part of the water meter project. We have an address listing that says these have lead, this has galvanized, these guys have copper or plastic.
So, then my question, next question is-
You only get one. You said you had one follow-up question.
I don't get five minutes yet.
Lee took yours and everybody else's.
So, the reported numbers are lead that we know?
Yes, letter galvanized. Letter galvanized, right.
Oh, lead and galvanized.
Lead and/or galvanized of our lead, of the letters that went out to the people, yes.
So, the total is the combined?
Correct.
Thank you.
This is why I don't have a report.
Charles Renac, 322 South Main Street. Now, once all the lead and galvanized is done, I don't want to say soon, but I do assume that we are going to stop treating the water for whatever.
So, we don't treat for lead?
Well, no. When was it? A year or two ago?
Tryhalanethanes?
Yeah.
And halicytic acids?
I think so.
Could be. Yes, sir. So, lead, that has nothing to do with lead pipes. It is a surface byproduct of chlorine in your water. If you'll remember back 150 years ago, when we didn't put chlorine in the water, people died of waterborne diseases. But now that you put chlorine in the water with organic material, you get tryhalanethane. Has nothing to do with the lead pipes. That's a whole separate ballgame.
Okay. Because I thought we were treating the water to contain the lead.
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
All right. Close audience comments. Does council have any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just one quick. Thank you, Gretchen, for giving that update on election and the updates. Just one thing I wanted to mention to everyone, if you desire to go to the polls, and you should, you don't have to wait until Election Day. Early voting is open. The closest early voting location is on Cranberry Road at the East Brunswick Community Center. Folks have told me the lines were, over the weekend when it opened, were fine. Maybe it's something that you want to do if you don't want to wait till Tuesday. But if you want to do that, that's the nearest early voting location. And then, since we're talking so much about lead lines, again, it would be remiss if I didn't have to say thank you to Senator Deignan, thank you to Assemblymen Kara Binczek and Sterling Stanley for being receptive to granting us a million dollars of lead line replacement. It's a start. It's not going to get us the whole way there. We still have till 2031. Yes, 2031 is going to be here before you know it. But it is, it is a nice start to get this problem underway. And Assemblymen Kara Binczek and Assemblyman Sterling Stanley are both up for election this year. I'd like to see them stay there so I can keep asking for a million dollars every year for the next six years. Or anyone on council, continue to ask them for a million dollars every year. That continues my report. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, Mr. Mayor, that please be careful driving Friday. It's Halloween, and the children will be out in their costumes collecting candy. And please don't forget to vote on November 4th.
I have, if you think, Dave-
No, go ahead.
Councilman, why don't you go first?
Nope. Go ahead. I'll follow you because I'm on a happier note.
You might be asleep, but I'm on a happier note.
You go right ahead, my friend.
Okay. My intention and my purpose tonight is to keep fighting for the rule of law, First Amendment rights, and for the residents of Milltown to be informed. I am accountable and answerable to them. That's my job, and I take it seriously. I have three key points for tonight. One, the changing or manipulation of our laws bylaws. The tax commitment on the property and properties on Ford Avenue and Main Street. The contamination situation on the same property or properties. First, there's been an issue over the past two months regarding the changing of our laws without resolution and majority vote from council members. It is especially troubling considering the limiting and the abridging of the speech to the residents of Milltown. They are owed transparency and the truth, whether it be my voice or anyone else sitting up here. We need to keep earning their trust every day. In Resolution 2025-22, we voted unanimously for council comments as its own entity. It was then changed without discussion or vote by the Agenda Committee. Mr. Carr, the spokesman, argued for expediency of meetings and stated that if we wanted to revert back, we should vote on it. The problem is, we had already voted to decide on January 6th. The law was passed. We should not have voted again, as I stated. We did, however, vote, and fortunately, a majority voted to uphold our law. This now brings us to the retribution for the reestablished council comments. Committee reports are now to be reserved for the first meeting of the month, which they have been. That also was established in Resolution 2025-22, but for some reason not followed. Fortunately, allowing reports for the residents. These reports are for the residents who pay taxes and deserve transparency and honesty. We all work for them. They do not work for us. We should have reports for them at every meeting, as all the professionals sitting here should. And if I can, right now, I'd like to make a motion to have a resolution to read reports at every meeting.
Just for the record, in order to do that, you would need to amend your rules of council. And you have prescribed manner in which you need to amend your rules of council, one of which is to provide a notice of the intention to amend the rules of council, which I can prepare and have ready for next meeting. And then, at the next meeting after that, you would need to move the resolution. So, if that's what you would like to do, that's what this motion should be, just so you understand the framework for which you need to follow.
Well, I understand that, but what does that mean for the motion that I made?
That means you can't technically make your motion right now because your rules of council have a method in which they need to be amended. In order to amend your rules of council, you need to follow the mechanism for amending.
All right. Then I will do that. Thank you.
I've got a question, Peter. How did this all come about in the first place?
Did you ask me?
Yeah, you're the attorney.
I am the attorney.
Well, that's what you, please explain that, how this all started.
As I've indicated numerous times in the past, this council frequently ignores what its rules of council say and doesn't do everything they're supposed to. And certainly, Councilman Poznanski has recognized that a change was made. That was then changed back. But to the extent that Councilman Poznanski has noted that council reports have been read at every meeting, both the first and the second meeting of the month, that isn't prescribed into rules of council. So, the council was doing something that it didn't necessarily authorize itself to do in adopting the rules of council. So, if you, I am not the gatekeeper of the council's prerogative in what it'd like to follow or not follow. I can just merely tell you what your rules say if you want me to answer the question.
Well, I'll also say, when the rules were changed, when we went against the sitting law that we had, they did not have to have a resolution. But then, we were asked to have a resolution at that meeting to change back when there was no, there was no need.
There was no resolution. Technically, it was just a vote that we went back to.
No, it was a vote, and it was made into law. And there was no need.
The rule existed. We just went back to the old one. We went back to what we actually approved in the beginning of the year.
You can finish when I'm finished here, okay?
I know. I'm just tired of ad nauseam. We voted in the beginning of the year. Your request that day was specifically to go back to what we voted for, and we did. So, then, your new request would be that you would like to change the rules of council again, which is why he's saying you'd need a resolution to change, again, change the rules of council. We honor to the letter of the law as to what we agreed in January. And I think January's coming, really just a few meetings away. We could do the whole thing then. We could start it over from scratch. We could make it anything we want it to be. But I just think that, you know, I've got other horses to beat.
Are you finished?
I am.
Okay.
Well, we, we finished my comments. So, then, I would like everyone to vote. I just want to finish my comments because, I mean, obviously, we all have our freedom of speech because I-
You don't want to interrupt you, correct?
You can. I don't care. I just want to make sure that everybody votes.
Councilman.
And that if we can just move this along.
Let's be respectful of everyone, please. My point is that we voted in January. We enacted a law. A law was changed without a resolution. So, then, we were asked to vote again on a law that was already passed. It is not necessary to do that. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I will end on a happy note.
Oh, you're still talking? I thought you said thank you. Did you say thank you?
No. I'm sorry. Because I didn't finish. I just have to catch myself back up here because of being interrupted. Thank you for that.
I'm almost there. The point I'm going to make here is the reports then were taken away. I understand that we were going against what our standing law was, doing reports at every meeting. But for the transparency to the residents, it was very appreciated. Because I do get, I do get reports. They don't always come to me. I get reports from the committees I'm a part of, and they want me to do a report at every meeting. I got from Ralph, I was asked to do a report tonight because of lack of transparency when we do the reports only once a month. All right. Now, I'm going to speak about taxes on Ford Avenue. I will speak about the taxes or financial obligations on the property or properties on Ford Avenue and Main Street. Some people are uncomfortable with me speaking about this issue, therefore, I shall continue. How do we allow ourselves to get to a point of being owed over $7 million in the roughly 25 years of this disgraceful, disgraceful situation in the center of Milltown? Did some past governors just drop the ball in hopes of an easy resolution? Probably. The taxes on the site have been paid. Make no mistake, they have been paid by you, young and old, struggling Milltown taxpayers, the forgotten men and women. And from when this $7 million comes in, council members at the time need to understand who paid the tax bill on this site. It was with people. That means a real conversation should take place on allocating the windfall. The school board, as someone had suggested to us, does not get a dime of that money as we already supply them with two-thirds of our tax money. $7 million owed, plus 18% interest each and every year, would be over $8 million by would be over eight million by this time next year. I hope in the future that whatever figure the total amount owed is not fractioned away as you, the taxpayer, has footed the bird wrongly and deserved the utmost in consideration. I have one more thing. This is on the Ford Avenue contamination. I'm going to speak about the ongoing situation regarding the contamination of the old Michelin site, land, air-
Just to the extent that that's relevant to the current redevelopment of the site, I don't know that we really ought to discuss that in the council's, council office.
I'd still like to speak about it.
Certainly, Councilman Poznanski, I can't stop you from speaking about it. I can just tell you that I don't believe it's in the best interest of the public.
I, I don't, I, I'll tell you, I, I will, I'll take you up on that, and I won't discuss it, but I will also say, you don't have any idea what I have here.
I don't, if you'd like to vet what you'd like to say with me in the future, I'll happily review it and let you know my thoughts.
Okay. Well, I will finish with this. First of all, because I'm not, we, we are not supposed to have, um, reports tonight, but I do have important things that I will bring up right now. First of all, I'm meeting tomorrow with Telly, the owner of TK One, here tomorrow at nine AM, to speak about, uh, hooking up for live stream here. That's number one. Also, I'm meeting shop owners tomorrow at five o'clock tomorrow evening to discuss demand fees. A lot of these people are very angry about this, and some of them are ready to, to give up their businesses here, just so people know. I'm also meeting with homeowners to discuss their water and sewer rates. They're not happy with the rates, and they plan to vent to me. And also, Ralph asked me to, to bring this up, DPW. Leaf bags will be available Monday through Fridays, and Saturday's eight till noon. Uh, the pool has been repaired, a large broken pipe had been leaking water for most of the season. And the heating, air conditioning replacement is still undecided for the DPW building and the firehouse. And also, another note, the painting of the annex building will most likely commence in the spring. When details can be worked out, the historical society with Barbara Wright at the helm is self-funding this project. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, and I apologize for the three families that have been waiting for this announcement for the past hour. Um, but also too, this is part of my recreation update. So, not an official report, but an update, which we can give during council comments. So, we'd like to thank everyone who participated in the Recreation Department's first-ever pumpkin carving contest this past weekend. Thirteen carved pumpkins were displayed along the Milltown Bridge on Friday and Saturday, and the creativity and detail in each pumpkin were truly impressive. This idea was originally suggested by former Councilman John Rega. Thank you, Mr. Rega, for inspiring such a memorable event, and we look forward to bringing it back next year. Now, it is my pleasure to announce the top three pumpkins. Number one, Millow Scream by the Cahill family. Number two, I'm Not Crazy, You're Crazy, by the Solomon family. And number three, Big Back by the Pastore family. Congratulations to all the winners, and thank you again for anyone, everyone who participated. And also, I'd like to mention, um, myself, and I know Councilman Menko have assisted with the Haunted River Walk this weekend. Um, I can say the eighth graders, eighth grade students did an amazing job, and, um, put another one in the books, so we're looking forward to next year. And that concludes my council comments, Mr. Mayor.
All the ears look like you have comments.
Not I, bear.
You have comments?
We're waiting for you.
Okay. Um, I have my comments, and it's not gonna be that long, I promise. So, uh, Mr. McClone, Mr. Piskonka, I have two quick questions for you. So, just for clarity, the lead line and the water replacement project is not correlated the same? So, the million-dollar grant was for the lead lines, for an installation of the lead lines? That has nothing to do with the water meters, correct?
That's correct. The replacement of the lead service.
It's the replacement of lead service. Now, why can't we go ahead and start the process of replacing the lead line service now, um, where if we have two hundred and some odd residents that we don't know of, or X number of homes that do not have lead lines in it currently? So, we know it's already gonna run, most likely, more than a million dollars regardless. So, why don't we start the process now? Get the, the homes that we do know, we know it's gonna be approximately X amount of dollars per home, start using that money towards the homes now, and start getting some relief for the residents that are currently, have the money available? Um, I think we should try to move this one forward and try to get that resolved, um, to assist with-
We, we will work with Mr. Carr and, um, get you a scope of services and get your problem right away.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Here's a percentage that you can use on, you know what your, uh, lead galvanized services as comparison to the total of two hundred that can be estimated, so.
Sure, and then the other services that we don't know yet, it's probably gonna be a percentage, whatever it is.
Correct.
Um, we could go for that afterwards, but why should the residents that currently have, um, meters, uh, lines identified, why should they be suffering because other residents don't, um, currently have, you know, have their, their stuff identified? Um, and the, uh, water meters, uh, I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, there is a, a fairly, um, larger percentage that it's commercial, um, it's, what's the percentage between commercial and residential, uh, for the meters not being installed yet? Roughly?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have the exact counts of commercial versus residential, only the totals. But, um, I know we have an issue at Risa, Home Depot's still outstanding, I can tell you those two. Um, there's a couple other miscellaneous ones, I'm just not sure which.
Have the borough buildings been installed yet?
No, we've been, um, awaiting pricing from the contractor. We got initial pricing, seemed a little steep, we asked them to go back to their, uh, sharpener pencils, and, um, they've gotten new pricing into us now, we're looking at that.
Is that included or excluded of the total number of, um, meters?
Excluded.
Excluded?
Yeah, it's over.
There was an add-on, man.
Okay.
It was add-on to the original conversation, when the original bid, so it is, it is covered. We're within the tolerance of the bid specs, if you will, to change our bid spec, if you will. Uh, we're within that tolerance to add these extra meters on there.
Okay.
But, it is outside of that number, yes sir.
All right, thank you. That's it, that's all I have. At this time, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Uh, the motion made by Councilman Collins, second by Councilman Potter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.